Hello?
Hi.
Is that me? Somebody passed by. Oh, ask me. Yeah, ask me. Oh, hi, Son.
Hi, sorry.
Yes, team, one, two, three. Still got it?
Pretty true. They're going to the part of this after right now. And then they're gonna come down. Like instead of, there's no go home, it's not like it's on the direct.
Thank you. It's good to have real signs right there. And why don't you stand up and introduce yourself, sir? And tell how long you've been there? And, and you're at Deming, New Mexico?
Pastor Steven Sykes, Deming, New Mexico. We've been there for about four years now. And so thankful for what God's doing. Last year, we were able to start the Southwestern Baptist Camp meeting. And had a good first one last year. Looking forward to a better one this year. Praise the Lord. Good meeting.
Good people. You know, he started that work too, leaving their presence. And had a lot of trips starting the last 10 years. You know, that's a good thing. I take a slow look at turn to page 480. Page 480. Page 480. I gotta get there. Anybody know the name Paul Anderson? I didn't figure you would. He was, at one time was considered the world's strongest man. And I remember him because he weighed 480 pounds. At one time, I wanted to be the world's strongest man. So I figured I had to weigh 480 pounds. I tried. 480. Would you have a seat, please? Now, it won't make a lot of noise. I just have to speak up a little bit. Okay. Gentlemen? You need to come? Have these young men sing? And brother Fisher's gonna preach. Okay?
You are my strength when I am weak. You are the treasure that I seek. You are my hope and my light. Singing you as a precious jewel. Your singing is but my day and hour. You are my hope and my light. Jesus, wherever God. Where is your name? Jesus, wherever God. Where is your name? Taking my sin, my post my shame. Letting again, I pass your name. You are my hope and my light. When I'm hard and I'm breaking down. When I'm tired, you fill my cup. You are my hope and my light. Jesus, wherever God. Where is your name? Jesus, wherever God. Where is your name? When I stand, I stand in all of you. I stand, I stand in all of you. Holy God to you, all praises due. I stand in all of you. When I stand, I stand in all of you. I stand, I stand in all of you. Holy God to you, all praises due. I stand in all of you. Jesus, wherever God. Where is your name? Jesus, wherever God. Where is your name? Where is your name?
Well, good job, guys. Thanks for belting that out a little bit like you believe in them, eh? Okay, it's the after lunch crowd, all right? So for the next 30 minutes, you can go to sleep. We'll wake you when you die. Look at your Bible if you would real quick. And take your scripture to the book of Matthew 15, please. Matthew, chapter 15. I have a thought tonight, or this morning for us. It's a little bit unusual. You have to follow me along just a little bit. Matthew, chapter number 15. It's a story you already know. But I want you to focus just a little bit differently on the actual event that's happening. Matthew, chapter 15, if you would. Verse number 21, Jesus is now departed out of the coast of Tyre and Sidon. And he comes upon a woman, a Canaanite woman. It's, I think, a very important aspect of what God's gonna show. That this woman with great understanding is gonna receive something of the Lord, but the disciples don't understand it. Wait, verse 22. Behold, a woman of Canaan came out. The same coast and cried unto him, "Have mercy on me, O Lord." And don't notice what she says. She says, "Thou son of David." Brother, now, a Canaanite woman would not know to call him the son of David. That's a Jewish term. That's an Old Testament term. "Have mercy on me, O Lord, thou son of David. My daughter is briefly vexed with the devil." I want you to know that the next thing that happened was he answered her not a word. And notice the attitude of the disciples. And his disciples came and besought him, saying, "Send her away, for she cried after us." Please, if you wanna make a little note in your Bible, the disciples considered her unclean. I'll say it again. Not just prejudice, but unclean. She's a Canaanite woman. Are you still with me, Deluca? The disciples are looking at her in a certain way. Send her away! But he answered and said, he said to this Canaanite woman, "I am not sent, but under the law sheet of the house of Israel." Would you look at me just for a moment? I think the disciples, in their hearts, did this. He said to us, not to you. Move on. Get away. You still with me or not?
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm just speculating. I'm not saying they were looking and doing it. But in their heart, when he said, "I'm not sent, but in the law sheet of the house of Israel," in their heart of hearts, I was thinking, they're thinking... I'll go a little further. That's right, you Gentile dog. Is that fair?
Yeah, sure.
Because they were taught that. That's right. Back in the Old Testament, they were told, when you come into the promised land, don't mix with the inhabitants of the land.
Right.
And so it says, "Then she came, then came she," verse 29, worshiped him, saying, "Lord, help me." But he answered and said, "It's not me to take the children's bread, Israel, and to cast it to dogs." Please look up here again. When he said, "It's not me to take the children's bread and cast it to dogs," I think they said in their heart, that's right. Get away. Move on. Were they prejudiced beyond that? They considered her totally unclean. And she said truthfully. Yet the dogs hear the crumbs which fall from their master's table. She had some understanding that, yes, it's supposed to go to the Jewish people first, but aren't there some crumbs for us? Gentile dogs. And the Lord noting that, said, "Great is thy faith." And the dog was healed. I want you to focus just on the moment that the disciples there said, "Send her away. Send her away. She cried after us." When he said, "I'm not sent, but the law sheet," don't you think they were thinking, "That's right. It's not me to take the children's bread and cast it before dogs." That's right. And I wanna make a statement there. One probably of the strongest ones in there feeling that way was Peter. Because Peter was there that day. Was Peter prejudiced? Oh, not just a little. But God was gonna do something in Peter's life. Look at John, chapter 4. John, chapter number 4. And you know this story too. John, chapter number 4. Stay right with me, please. John, chapter number 4. And look at verse number 5. Verse number 5. You know about the woman at the, at the well? Samaritan woman at the well? Verse number 5, "Then cometh he to a city of Samaria." And there at that city, he came, verse 6, to Jacob's well. One of the ones that was dug in. Verse number 7, "Then comeeth the woman of Samaria to draw water." Jesus said to her, "Give me to drink." Notice verse 8. His disciples were gone away unto the city to buy meat. But they weren't there right at that time. And the woman of Samaria said unto him, verse number 9, "How is it that thou, being a Jew, askest drink of me, which am a woman of Samaria?" Then she says, for the Jews had no dealings with the Samaritans. Verse 27. Verse 27. "And upon this came his disciples." They had just got back from going, if you would, to the city to buy meat. And they came back and they marvelled that he talked with a woman. "Yet no man saith, 'Why seekest thou her? Why talkest thou with her?'" They were, they were shocked that he was even talking to this Samaritan woman. Now, we know this. Jesus had a purpose with everyone he spent time with. Come on, is that right? And we know she's gonna be used, if you would, to, to go back and propagate the gospel. But the point of it being is, I want you to focus on the disciples, that they were marveling that he was even speaking to her. And one of them there was Peter. Now, look over at Acts, chapter 10. You know the story of Acts, chapter 10. Stay right with me. Acts, chapter 10. Acts, chapter 10. Now, Peter now, obviously, has gone through the death, the burial, the resurrection. Peter has, just like them, had, where the Holy Ghost was breathed on them. The Jesus opened up their understanding. Then they waited for the promise of the Father. And the Holy Ghost came in power in Acts, chapter number 2. And they've been experiencing so much, so many things of the Lord. So many new things, if you would. But Acts, chapter 10, is, is going to happen in Peter's life in such an unusual way. And you know, this is where Peter is, verse number 9. Acts, chapter 10, verse number 9. On the morrow, as they went on their journey and drew nigh to the city, Peter went up on the house roof to pray about the sixth hour, about morn time. And while he was up there, we know that the Lord did something to him to begin to change him. And he let that certain sheet down, that vessel, if you would, where there was that. "Unclean beasts, send them." And then verse 13, "A voice came out of heaven and says, 'Rise, Peter, kill me.'" Peter said, "Not so, Lord. I'm not, I've never eaten anything that is common or unclean." And then we know God says, "What God hath cleansed, that call not thou common." This was done three times. And look at verse number 17. "Now while Peter saith, 'Now did in himself what this vision, which had been seen, should mean.'" And behold, remember Cornelius had sent, by God's leading, he had sent two of his Gentile servants and one of his Italian soldiers to go get a guy named Peter that was down and jumped, if you would, at Simon's house. And those guys showed up. And they called and asked for Peter, Simon, whose surname was Peter. Verse number 19, look at him. "While Peter thought on the vision, the Spirit spayed, said unto him, 'Behold, three men seek thee. Arise therefore, get thee down, go with them, doubting nothing, for I have sent them.'" Can't you see Peter coming down? And who's waiting for him were three Gentiles. Two servants and one Italian soldier. And the Lord had said through the Spirit to Peter, "Go with them, doubting nothing." If you know the story, Peter took six of his own Jewish brethren with him, not knowing what's about ready to happen. You know that Cornelius is gonna receive Christ as Savior, but I want you to remind you how Peter felt back in the book of Matthew about that woman. And I want you to remind you how Peter felt in John about that woman of Samaria there, the woman at the well, and how unclean. And now God's beginning to show him something that he's not quite sure of yet, but it's going to change Peter. And he's doubting what's going on. He's not quite comfortable with it. When Peter and his six friends show up with the three Gentiles who lead them into Cornelius, notice what happens in verse 25. Stay with me. Peter was coming in. Cornelius met him, verse 25. Settle down at his feet, worship him. Peter took him up, saying, "Stand up, I'm myself an almighty." And as he was talking with her, he went in and found many that were coming to gather. Cornelius had gathered a group of people. And he said to them, notice what Peter says. You know how that is, is an unlawful thing for a man that is a Jew, to keep company or come into one of another nation. This is what Peter knew thus far. But God has showed me that I should not call any man common or unclean. Notice that word, "unclean." In fact, that's how Peter felt about that woman of the well, that she was unclean. And that's how Peter felt, if you would, about that situation with the Canaanite woman. Verse number 29, "Therefore I came unto you without gainsaying. I, I didn't, I didn't rebel against what God told me to do as soon as I was set for. I asked therefore, 'What intent ye have sent for me?'" Well, Camillo says, you know, about four days ago, I was fasting. And all as I know is that we were supposed to send for you. And verse number 33, now we're all present, verse number 33, to hear before God what you have to say to us. And then Peter began to proceed. And he started giving them the gospel because he perceived that God was now a respecter of persons. Come on, is that right? Brother, I wanna make this statement to you. This was a big change for Peter. From looking at somebody who's thinking they're unclean and send her away, to why are you even talking to that woman? And now here he is, the Gentiles. And not only is he in their company, but he's about ready to give them the gospel. Come on, is that right? Which he is thinking, you don't give the dogs this. And God is changing him. I'll say it again. God is changing him. What has this got to do with us? Please listen. You may find yourself, before this life is over, going through a few changes. I'll say it again. You may find yourself going through a few changes. I'm not talking about becoming a liberal. Because anytime a Baptist says, "Change", matter not with those giving a change. We're not changing. Wait a minute. God might change your heart a little bit to increase your ministry.
Yes.
Let me say it again. God might change your heart just a little bit to change your ministry and make it more effective.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna say it one more time. And it will create doubt inside of you. One of the doubts will be, what will others say? What will others think? What if they find out what I'm thinking? I'm not talking about changing doctrine. Please listen. I'm not talking about changing your belief on the book. I'm not changing your belief on, on the, on the gospel. I'm not changing your belief on who the Godhead is. I'm not changing your belief. I'm not even talking about changing your music standard. I'm not even talking about changing your dress standard. I'm just saying, God might start to change you a little bit. To where even your wife said, "What's going on inside of you?" What are you doing? You're preaching a different way. You're teaching a different way. You seem to be a little bit more tolerant. Oh, we don't want them to hear that. These are young people. Stay on the track. I'm gonna tell you something. If God shows us something, we ought to obey. Brother Jim, I didn't know you when you were young, young. Obviously, I wasn't even born yet. But I'll guarantee you, there've been a few changes along the trail. That God has just shown you to be a little bit more tolerant or something. To where you could minister and help someone. To where you could minister and help someone and not be judgmental of them. And maybe it was how we viewed a situation, or how we viewed a set of circumstances, or even how we viewed someone else. I'm gonna show you scripture in a moment. Because Peter was going through quite a change here, and he was about ready to be astonished about something. And notice what happens, if you would. He gets with the gospel. Stay with me. Verse forty, then God raved that the third day had shown him openly. Now he's at the end of the giving them the gospel. The Bible says that he talked about ordaining, verse forty-two, of God to be the judge of the quick and dead. And the Bible says that, that through his name, verse forty-three, whoever believed in him should receive remission of sins. And while yet Peter spake these words. The Holy Ghost fell on them which heard the word. Verse forty-five, and they of the circumcision. Remember those six guys that went with him? They of the circumcision, which believed, were astonished. Astonished, like completely surprised. Like, this doesn't make any sense. As many that came with Peter, because that on the Gentiles was also poured out the gift of the Holy Ghost. You read that and say, that's no big deal. Brother, that was a complete change in what they thought. It went against every fiber in them. Now these unclean people are receiving the Spirit and receiving salvation? What are we gonna do with them now? I'll say it again. What are we gonna do with them now that they got saved? You know why God may not bring certain people in our church? We would think, what are we gonna do with them? I'll say it again. What are we gonna do with them? One more time. What are we gonna do with that type? And God might say, I'm bringing that type to your church to change you a little bit. Yeah, that's gonna change the church. Wait a minute, wait a minute. See, now we're going back to that liberal thing. Brother, what God was doing was expanding the ministry a little bit. He said, I'm not changing. Okay, then no. But don't be surprised when God shows you something in the book that begins to change you just a little bit. To do what? To make you just a little bit more tolerant of something that in your heart you would've said, nah, 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 no way. Now, this message may sound like I'm going liberal, but I'm not. Because I'm not talking about changing the book. I'm not talking about changing what we do with our music, or what we do with our standards. I'm not talking about anything like that. I'm talking about when somebody gets saved, someone's got a disciple. Somebody's gotta work with them. Brother, if you don't want all kinds of different unusual people in your church, don't have an RU. Our RU sometimes gets more visitors on Friday night than we get on Sunday morning. Oh, then we do invite them to church? Them. You say, who are them? What some of us used to be? Come on, you still with me or not? All different sizes, shapes, colors, marriages, different. Brother, if you don't, look, if you wanna be around just perfect marriages, don't be around a military base. Because if you're gonna minister to a military base, you've got sixteen different nationalities married to each other. Are you still with me or not? And you've just gotta work through what they believe, how they believe, the cultural stuff, all the rest of it, and just get used to it. It's great. I love it. Brother, there's not a delight in being invited to a Spanish fellowship. When they're talking behind your back, in front of you. I love the Spanish. The Spanish ministry at our churches, I mean, we fit together. A lot of children don't know there's prejudice, because they just grew up with bilingual children. Still with me or not? Man, you can't be. Don't you all have a few Spanish in your area? There's Spanish people in here right now. We have, I don't know, eight hundred, nine hundred thousand Hispanic people in our area. Why shouldn't we reach out to them? I'm a great builder. I can't tell them. But they tolerate me.
Yes, sir.
And I don't tolerate them. I'm indebted to our Hispanic ministry. They've done so much in our church. I think our Spanish ministry are all better English one of these days. And that should be just fine. Come on, you still with me? My Filipino minister, I can't wait to get invited to their fellowship. Man, they gonna have a fellowship. What I'm saying is, we gotta expand, if you would, a little bit of something we're uncomfortable with to get comfortable with it. Look, I grew up in Ohio. We didn't have many multicultural nationalities, even in our old school district. I mean, school district. I'm talking about seven schools. We just weren't used to that. When I went in military, I had to learn everybody was green. Come on, is that right? What are you saying? I'm saying, God might show you something about yourself where it creates a little doubt inside of you, like when the sheets came down and says, rise, Peter, kill and eat. And he said, not so, Lord. And Jesus said, what I have cleansed, call not that not common or unclean. Get past how you're viewing people. I'll say it again. Get past how you're viewing people. And you say, well, that was it. That happened, and there was no more problems. Oh, no, the problems had just began for Peter. Once they get saved, now he's gotta go back and report. Who's he gonna report to? Please, look up here. The brethren. Like, did you hear what happened at that meeting? Did you hear who Brother Crewe's had in to preach? I hope that about this meeting. I wanna tell you, after a while, it's just like, grow up, boys, grow up. Clean your ears out and grow up. Don't get past some of that stuff. Some of you missionaries that travel out. Man, you gotta watch what you say at the dinner table. They can set you up and ask you a question about this or that, and you're kinda, kinda fumbling around going, okay, are they for him or against him? I gotta figure this out. You know what I'm talking about or not? You're looking at me like, no, that's not the case. Oh, yeah, you can mess everything up just because you say, oh, yeah, I was over there and I did this. And the guy goes, oh, I didn't know that. Is this okay what I'm saying? This is the message you don't wanna get out. Meaning, don't send this one out. It's gonna sound too liberal. But if we're gonna grow in grace and be what God wants us to do, and be who God wants us to be, sometimes they'll change us a little on the inside. And we will be uncomfortable with it, and it's gonna be hard to know what to say. Look at chapter eleven. Stay with me, chapter eleven. Notice verse two. Verse two. And when Peter was come up to Jerusalem, they that were of the circumcision, these are believers still, the circumcisions, contented with him, saying, thou wentest into men uncircumcised and did eat with them. Brother, please, look up here. He did more than just ate with them. But they still considered Peter went to something unclean. Wait a minute. They didn't know that Peter was bade or bid by the Holy Ghost to God. I'll say it again. Sometimes the Holy Ghost may tell you to do something that nobody else understands. Make sure it's of the Holy Ghost, and then stay with it. You don't have to defend yourself. Just let him judge you. I'll say it again. You don't have to defend yourself if you know the Holy Spirit's in it. Just let him judge you. And Peter was rehearsing it. He'd been rehearsing it for a few days. By the way, it's a good thing he took those six guys with him. Because they saw it happen. And they were his witnesses. Look, Peter was a church leader. When they bade him to go, said, we're coming. This is what's going on. Peter quickly grabbed six guys and said, I need you to go with me. You'll see that in this scripture coming up. And it was a good thing they were there, because, you know, verse number fifteen, not only did he eat with them. Oh, verse number twelve. Look, verse number twelve. And he rehearses, the Spirit made me go, but then nothing doubted more over these six brethren that accompanied me. I mean, they were there too. Wasn't just me. We entered into the house, and the guy said, here, that an angel had told us, told him to send for someone to John flood, whose name was Simon, surname Peter, that's me. And that guy's gonna tell you the words and how your house could be saved. And, look, guys, I began to speak. These guys were there. Verse fifteen, the Holy Ghost fell on them as on us at the beginning. And then remembered I the word of the Lord. Isn't it good if we can get a scripture to that later? Peter said, then I remembered something. John indeed baptized with water. But ye shall be baptized with the Holy Ghost forasmuch then as God gave them the like gift as he did in us who believed in the Lord Jesus. Then he said this, what was I that I could withstand God? And please look up here. Those six guys with him are going, we saw it. Everything he's saying is true. What could I do? Please look up here. It wasn't just a paradigm shift for Peter, it was a paradigm shift for the church. I'm gonna say it again. It wasn't just a shift for Peter. This was a shift for the church. When you start introducing new things to your church, not everybody's gonna like it. What do you mean new? Like a new ministry? I'll say it again. You start interesting, introducing new stuff. I'm not talking about liberal. Come on. Get liberal out of your mind. You start introducing new ministries. Hey, a church says, we're gonna start a band route. Start bringing families in on the band route. Some people in the church are going, oh, no, oh, no. That's not the work here. How do you know that? I've been to churches. We're gonna start a bus ministry. Oh, no, oh, no. I know your church is used to a bus ministry, but some people, when you introduce bus ministry, they're like, what are we gonna do? That's gonna ruin our kids. Come on, talk to me a little bit. We're gonna start an RU. Oh. What's that gonna be? We're gonna start a rescue mission. What's that gonna be? We're gonna reach out to different, if you would, nationalities. Oh, no. What's that gonna be? In this case, we're gonna have Gentiles? That we have to disciple? Gentiles. Brother, thank God they did, because most of us are dogs. Former dogs. Now in Christ. Come on, is that right? The concept is, when God begins to change something inside of you, it drives you to doubt for a while. What do I do with this? How do I implement? And then, please listen, what are they gonna say? Don't tell me that doesn't cross our minds. Okay, everybody's like, no, that doesn't cross my mind. Yes, it does. Yes, it does. Did I say we're not talking about changing the book? We're not talking about really changing our doctrine? We're talking about reaching out more? Being a little bit more tolerant? Now, when I say that, it's like, what do you mean tolerant? Does that mean liberal? Let me show you a little bit what it means. Look, if you would, at Galatians, chapter two. Galatians, chapter two. Remember, Peter rehearsed all this? And now I'm gonna show you something about Galatians, chapter two. Won't be much longer. You're doing well right after lunch. Galatians, chapter number two. You know the story, but I want you to just, with this concept in mind. Verse number nine says that James, Cephas, and John were pillars. James, Peter, and John. We think that's the three that Jesus would take with him on special events. Would you agree? Peter, James, and John, they were pillars. They were very important, if you would, in the church. They even gave to me and Barnabas the right hand in fellowship. That's Paul speaking. That we should go to the heathen. And they, under the circumcision. Brother, may I say, both the heathen and the circumcision were both heathens. One had religion, one didn't. Come on, is that right? But they both needed Christ. Only that we should remember the Lord, for the saying which I also was forward to do, but when Peter was coming to him, I was stood unto the faith, because he was to be blamed. He's a leader. You know what? Before that certain came from James. You know, he's eating with the Gentiles. We just had a big fellowship. But when those guys from James came, you know what he did? He withdrew and separated himself, fearing them which are on the circumcision. And his leadership and influence was so much that the other Jews assembled likewise with him, and as much as Barnabas carried away. Let me make this statement to you. Please listen. Peter waffled a little bit. What do you mean he waffled? Even though he took the gospel to Cornelius, please listen, even though he came back and said, here's what we did, here's what God did, when it got down to it, he waffled a little bit. He said, what do you mean? After you change, you might still waffle a little bit. Did I lose you right there? After God puts something in your heart that changes you a little bit, and you begin to kinda change the atmosphere, the outlook of how your church views it, how your family views it, it's possible to waffle a little bit. Like, what are you talking about? What did you change, Brother Fisher? Oh, man, there's been so many things God has changed in me. If I told you, it would almost be offensive to you. So I'm not gonna expose myself. But it would almost be offensive to you, where I was at when I started, and certain things that I believe, and how God has reformed that in me a little bit. By saying, who are you to believe that? What are you talking about? I'm not talking about doctrine. I'm talking about just, I'll say this, preferences. Come on, is that a good way to say it? Because a lot of these are changing preferences. And then the church will say, you know what? After ten years ago, you believed this, and now you changed. And I have to say, I know. And I had him say to me, we're glad you did. Like, you were really weird. You still with me or not? Do you know what I'm talking about, Mick? I know you did. Because we know where we were taught and trained a little bit. Some of these things, please listen, were preferences. But we followed them. But we didn't wanna follow them without God showing us. And then we effectively say, I wouldn't go to your church. Okay? That's why you don't come to our church. What do you mean? What sounds like you're a little wishy-washing? No, no, no. I'm just open if the Spirit bids us to do something, not to miss it. If you have a street preaching ministry, you gotta invite in the church. And you never know who walks in. I'll say it again. If you have a street preaching ministry, the churches have to be tolerant. Because you never know who's gonna walk in. And they can cause problems. But are we supposed to try to reach anybody and everybody, or not? Which means I have to change a little bit. What was the afternoon message? I don't know. Some liberal guy from California said that. We're supposed to be liberals now. If you would interpret it that way, you'd miss the whole message. And I'll give you the scripture. The last scripture is proof text. Look at Philippians one. Philippians one. To me, this is... Philippians one. To me, this is, this is proof text. Philippians one. This is, uh, something Paul's gonna say, but I, I think we would all want this kind of spirit in us. Philippians, chapter one. Notice what he says in verse fifteen. "Some indeed preach Christ out of what? Envy and what? And some also of what? Goodwill." I'll stop there, because this is inspired by the Holy Ghost, and Jesus is saying, "You know, some preach me, and their motive's wrong. They preach about me with envy and strife, and some do it out of goodwill. The one preached Christ of contention, not sincerity, supposing, Paul said, "to add affliction to my bonds." They're using Christ the wrong way. "The other of love, knowing that I am set for the defense of the gospel, what then?" Question mark. "Notwithstanding every way," Paul says, "whether in pretense or in truth Christ is preached, and I, I therein do rejoice, yea, and will rejoice." I wanna tell you, if we could get that in us, it would stop us gossiping about people, judging other preachers, and just say, "Well, to their own master they stand and call." What do you mean? He said, "In every way, whether it's envy or strife, whether it's goodwill, whether it's out of contention, whether it's not sincerely, whether it's even against us trying to add affliction to my bonds, you know what? If Christ is preached, I therein do rejoice, yea, and will rejoice." You say, "That sounds liberal." Read what it says. And realize, sometimes our opinion just doesn't matter. The older you get, the less you're impressed with your own opinion. When you're young, you think you know everything, and your opinion is important. As you get older, more humility, and forget half what you believe anyways, you're less impressed with your opinion. In fact, you can sit at a table, let them talk, and let them talk, and let them talk, not say we're... Just say, "It doesn't even matter what they're arguing about. I don't even wanna get in." No, Sister, I know what you and I do. We quietly excuse ourselves to go to the bathroom and don't come back. Because we don't wanna get involved. I don't wanna sit at a table at a meeting and feel dirty and guilty by the time I leave that table because of what's being discussed. Are you still with me? Did I lose you? Why? Because after a while, it's like, "Look, but they're doing this, they're doing that." And I'm thinking, "Yeah, strife, envy, against us, contention, maybe not even sincerely." But man, if I could just have the mind of Paul. Paul's mind was, "Look, I'm just gonna rejoice, leave it alone, and move on." Don't you have, don't you have standards in your church yet? I don't, aren't you separated? Try to be a little bit. Do you think you guys are going the wrong way? Please look up here. Maybe. Not trying to. It's like fighting upstream. The world's pushing on you, and you just keep swimming upstream, and swimming upstream, and swimming upstream, and people test and try. You don't wanna hurt people, but you gotta maintain some kind of belief. In our school, we have school standards. You have to. Come on, is that right? You have to. But you don't wanna be ugly or unkind, but you know somebody's gonna get hurt. But you still gotta maintain something along those lines. But when they disagree with you, all you can say is, "Look, I understand." "Well, then, why are you doing it?" "Look, I understand." "Yeah, but I don't see it. Just, I understand." "Or are you gonna change it?" "No, but I understand." And I'm not, I'm not gonna make you feel bad just to prove right or wrong. Because if you were running it, you'd run it a different way, and you'd probably be right for you, and I'm right for us. Are you hearing what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
But I don't need to spit on you. I don't think John the Baptist wore a suit and tie. But I, we still do. But I don't think he'd come out of the wilderness wearing a suit and tie. But I'm not saying he was wrong. It was just who he was. But we think of him in a very high way. But we wouldn't let him in our church that, dressed that way on the platform. Come on, yes or no? You say, "Well, that was torturous." Well, that's what I'm talking about. I'm glad you guys in shirts and ties and suits look great. Look sharp. You're not going to John the Baptist University. We're not issuing you candle skins to wear. Because we're in a culture, but whatever you do, don't get full of yourself. And look at somebody else not quite dressed this way, and look down and you know how they do it. Don't do that. Because the Holy Ghost will spite you for that. So you might find yourself changing a little bit. "Wow, not me. Not, not with those that are giving change. I'm gonna stay right the way I am." Yeah, Peter thought that too. But Peter's ministry had to expand. Please listen. What, 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 what expansion did Peter's ministry have to do? He had to include Paul. And Paul was a Pharisee called to the Gentiles and had a heart for those Gentiles. Come on, is that right? And when Peter waffled just a little bit, Paul said, "Wait a minute. I gotta call you up publicly 'cause you're messing with my ministry." Before a certain came from James, you were in here eating with us, and now when they came, you withdrew yourself like men pleasing stuff. Peter, you're the one that took the gospel to Cornelius and to his group. You started this whole thing. But I'm called to finish it and to continue it on. And I gotta stand up for those I minister to. If you read the rest of Philippians there, he's gonna say a lot of stuff about, in Christ Jesus, we're all one. Even Barnabas got carried away. Barnabas. Remember Barnabas? Barnabas. The one Paul worked with? Better yet, the one who worked with Paul? It was Barnabas and Saul. Barnabas and Saul, then Paul and Barnabas, and then Paul. And Barnabas took off to help John Mark, became Paul and Silas. That Barnabas. I don't wanna be around a mean spirited crowd. Let me say the last thing. I don't wanna be around a mean spirited crowd. They would look at that thing in Philippians and say all kinds of stuff about it. If they're not sincere, they ought not be preaching Christ. Paul said, "They even do it in insincerity, and I rejoice." I'd say that's pretty tolerant. Maybe God's been bringing you through some changes. Maybe you're, maybe the sheet just came down out of heaven. I'm not, I'm not saying it did. But maybe you're like, "Dally, like, what am I going through? What is, what is God due to me? I feel like, I feel like I just wanna love everybody." And I know I can't do that. I haven't been a Baptist. But I think we could reach out to them. And that doesn't mean we have to be like them. I still am against ecumenicalism. Come on, is that right? We have to take a stand on something. But ecumenicalism means they've changed doctrine. So we take a stand on that. But brother, if you're gonna change your church a little bit, change your family a little bit to tolerate just a little bit more to a lot of people coming in, it's gonna create problems. But it has to start within us first. The sheet came down. Peter doubted. Stay with me. What does this mean? He goes downstairs, and three Gentiles, an Italian soldier, and two servants are waiting for him. Uh, "We're sent, and we're supposed to bring you." If P would've said, "What for?" They would've said, "I don't know. We're just supposed to seek you out, and we're supposed to have you come with us." And the Spirit had already told Peter to go. So Peter quickly grabs six guys, and off they go. Please. I don't know, in my mind's eye, they're walking from Joppa over to where Cornelius is, and in my mind's eye, there's probably three leading the way, and they're all Gentiles, and the sixth are back here talking in Hebrew. But I don't think they're getting along that great like fellowshiping, because nobody knows what's going on. Please listen, yet. But in twenty-four hours, everything's gonna change. The six are gonna watch people get saved. Those three guys up there, it's, it's just, has crossed my mind. They were in there when they heard the gospel. I wonder if they got saved too. What do you mean? I wonder if the three guys that came to get Peter, not knowing what it was about, because they were in there when Peter gave the gospel, I wonder if the Holy Ghost fell on them too. That'll change everything. That gets away of, you know, the wonderful thing about not being Hispanic, but getting along with Hispanic people, and then getting along with us, is the Holy Ghost. The wonderful thing about getting along with you named culture is the Holy Spirit of God. I go to Thailand and feel comfortable with God's people there. I mean, I speak the language. And by the way, I don't eat all the food. And they know that because it's hot. And my digestive tract is not used to that. So they make American stuff for some of us that go as a priest. And I'm like, "Oh, do you want some of Mars?" "Uh, no, thank you." "God bless you." "Oh, it's not hot. Not hot. It burns around your lips, man." Let alone it does your digestive tract. And I wanna enjoy the trip and be at the preaching schedule, amen. I'm only there for three days. When I go in, and they're very kind about it. Brother, I wanna tell you something. Maybe God is working inside of you a little bit, changing you just a little bit. I haven't told anybody. Let the Holy Ghost do it. And, and realize, it's to expand who and what you are, how, how effective you can become. Peter became more effective, even though he waffled a little bit in the book of Galatians. It was called out by Paul. Later on, if you read at the end of Peter, they're in good shape with each other. They're big boys. Peter and Paul get along because they have ministries diversified. But those ministries bless each other because they're of the Lord. Get the message? So don't go out and say, "Man, I was really liberal in the afternoon." Depends on how you view change. Not all change is bad. Peter's change was good for the church expansion. Say amen so I can be done. Even if you disagree. See what the Holy Ghost does. Let's bow our heads just for a moment. Pastor, you come. Father, I pray that this message will be received with the Spirit, that it was intended about the changes that can happen inside of us by Thee. And Father, we pray that we be careful, we be cautious, that we make sure it's the Holy Ghost doing it, or God, that you'd have your way, that we could be more useful in this lifetime for Thee. Help us take the example of Peter from the time of the Canaanite woman, where they said, "Lord, let's send her away. Send her away" to where the Holy Ghost was sending Peter towards the Gentiles to hear the gospel. Please, Lord, help us to consider these things. In Jesus' name we pray, and all God's people say.
Being American, I like mashed potatoes and gravy. We had some people from, uh... Where's Paul from? Oh. And they can buy you in to eat. And you just wanna, I mean, they just walk in. I don't, they're just different. They just walk into everybody's house, and nobody never knocks. You know, they just walk in. And I'm thinking to myself, "That's really different." And so, uh, I learned to eat some of their food. They had a thing called roti, okay? And, uh, it's rice flour and everything. They fry that. Boy, I learned to like roti, okay? And momo, or something like that. Uh, they have all sorts of different foods. Filipinos. Man, you know, they like to eat. And the Chinese, they do a good job of it too. Anyway, I like it. Don't you? Uh, that's a good thing. "What's, thank you, sir. Okay. We're glad that you did that. Okay. That's a good thing. Let's get our songbook." You guys are really exciting today, actually. I'm glad I'm alive, aren't you? Let's see, is it Tuesday morning or Tuesday evening, or Tuesday afternoon? Take your songbook, okay? Turn to page four hundred and eighty-eight. Four hundred and eighty-eight. By the way, um, I've asked him for blessings today earlier, and, uh, I got, when Brother Lance showed up, you know, he introduced himself. I was really blessed by that. You know, it, it really wasn't a surprise. And so, because I remember him when he was, you know, young. Now you're a little bit older. And, uh, that was a blessing, by the way. Four hundred and eighty-eight. New name written down in glory.
In 488, new name written down in glory. Ready to see? Yeah. Brother Perry here. I like him so much, I'm gonna let him go over and follow Brother Fisher. Isn't that nice to do, Brother Perry?
That's pleasant.
Yes. Brother Perry is in Sierra Vista, Mount Misses Baptist Church. I'm gonna have to correct him. And, you know, it's certainly good to have people. Young people like Brother Perry come. And so, we're gonna have them preach. It's always good to have people that are fundamental. Amen? And stand for the Lord, okay? So we'll let him do that. Good. Thank you for your kindness, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming through. Thank you for that so much. And I own a business by Perry. I'm pastor at Mount Misses Baptist Church there in Sierra Vista. Only been there about eight months. And so, it's just been a roller coaster ride already so far. Grew up in central Illinois. Spent a few years at Bible college in northwest Indiana. Then almost nine years in Arkansas. And then the Lord put us out here and we're glad to be here. So excited about what the Lord is gonna do. Thankful that we've had some of our church members here for the meeting as well. And thankful for the opportunity to bring the message here this afternoon. Lunch was great, wasn't it? Tremendously. I'm glad I wasn't the one that had to go right after it, you know, because that would've been tough. I'm sure that it's just now settling in for you now. And so, it might be that far for me. But anyway, take your bibles this afternoon, please. Let's go to Mark, chapter five. Mark, chapter five, a familiar portion of Scripture probably for most of us. We're gonna pick up in verse number 22. Truly, all I wanna do this afternoon is hopefully be an encouragement and a help to someone. And I don't plan to take too much time. There's men that are injured much wiser than I, according to hearing from them. And so, we would take, if you would, the term, please, in Mark, chapter five. And we're gonna start off in verse number 22. It says, "And behold, there cometh one of the rulers of the synagogue, Jerius by name; and when he saw him, he fell at his feet. And besought him greatly, saying, My little daughter lieth at the point of death; I pray thee, come and lay thy hands on her, that she may be healed and she shall live." And Jesus went with him, and much people followed him, enthronced him. It says in verse number 25, "And a certain woman, which had an issue of blood twelve years, and had suffered many things of many physicians, had spent all that she had, and was nothing better, but rather grew worse when she had heard of Jesus, came in the press behind and touched his garment." She said, verse number 28, where she said, "If I may touch but the cloth, his clothes, I shall be made whole." Move over there to verse number 35, now if you please, of chapter five. And it says, "While heest faked, there came from the ruler of the synagogue's house certain, which said, Thy daughter is dead; why troublest thou the master any further?" And this afternoon, for the next few minutes, I just wanna talk about this thought of when it seems like we've lost it all. When it seems like that purpose that was there before, or that cause that we had before is no longer the forefront any longer. It seems like we've lost it. What should we do? So let's pray real quick this afternoon. Our Father, we thank you for this opportunity since today to open up your Word and also to hear all the preaching that has been brought forth so far this morning and this afternoon, Lord. I just ask that you would bless again. If you have to speak, give me the words to speak this afternoon. And that'd just be a help to the folks here this afternoon as well. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen. Of course, we know here that a man named Jerius has come to Jesus Christ. Jerius was a prominent man in his time and very renowned, if you may. And he came to Jesus with a great problem. Great enough to make this man a renowned. Great enough to make this man of great stature to fall down before this man's Jesus, Jesus' feet and beg him for some help. His problem was the fact that his daughter was lying there at the brink of death. This, because of that, he came to Jesus. Maybe he hadn't went and tried everything else that he thought he could do. Maybe like much, much like this lady later on with this issue of blood, and had tried doctors and different things. But he came to a point where in his mind, the only thing that he could do was to come to this man, Jesus. This was his last case. This was his, the last ditch effort to be able to see his daughter sick. And he needed that was sick to be healed. And he needed a miracle to take place. And after a little bit of time, he convinced Jesus to be able to come back to his house. So they begin to make their way. And I don't know if you're like me, but many times as I'm going through the Scriptures, I kinda picture of how it went along maybe. And so Jerius is bowed down at Jesus' feet and has begged Him to come. And finally, Jesus says, okay, I will come along with you. And so maybe Jerius, you know, started walking briskly away and looked back and noticed Jesus wasn't walking as fast as he was. And so, he kinda took a few steps back and weighed on him. Maybe he was even so forward enough to put his arm on Jesus' shoulders and try to briskly move along. I don't know exactly how all it went. But the Bible does tell us that as they're going along, they encounter a throng of people, a great crowd of people. And no doubt in Jerius' mind, it had to be the thought of, this is definitely not what I needed. Anybody ever been there? You in a hurry? And you hop in your car, you gotta get in someplace quick. And all of a sudden, it's a traffic jam. You can't get anywhere that you wanna, that you wanna go in that timeframe. And it just seems like it's delayed and delayed and delayed. And thinking, come on, I'll get on board, trying to get everything to go quicker. And it just seems like no matter what you do, it just doesn't get any better. And here it is, Jerius has encountered this delay once again with Jesus trying to get him to his daughter to help. And precious moments were beginning to slip away. As they go along, of course, not only was the crowd delaying, but the next thing you know, this woman comes up and barely even, I mean, just touches the hem of Jesus' garment. And Jesus stops and asks, who is it that touched me? No doubt the disciples, I'm sure. And also Jerius is thinking, who touched you? There's hundreds of people around you. There's this great crowd, what are you talking about? We got places to go, let's go, we gotta get there. My daughter is about to die, and you are our last hope. Jesus stops and tries to, and takes the time and deals with this woman with the issue of blood. And she is healed as we read along. But then we come to verse number 35, where we stop before we pray. The servant of this man, Jerius, comes to him and says, "Thy daughter is dead. Why troublest thou the master?" Maybe Jerius was trying to, as politely as he could, get him to quickly get there before everything was said and done. And then that report comes, she's dead. "Why troublest thou the master?" You know, as we go through life, many times, we try to do everything we can to have maybe a good and prosperous life. For those of us who desire to serve the Lord in the ministry in any way, of course, we wanna see the Lord's blessings on our ministries. We wanna see the Lord's blessings upon the people that we're serving. And we have plans and aspirations and dreams, no doubt, of how the Lord is gonna be able to use us. And we set out on that journey from the beginning. It seems like everything might be going just along like we hoped. And then there's some bumps in the road. And we're trying to hang on, we're trying to keep faith. And the next thing you know, something devastating hits. And it's to that point like Jerius, I'm sure, felt. And that report comes, and why troublest thou the master? What's the cause anymore? What's the purpose that you're trying to go through this? We strive to provide for those we love, amen? Sometimes it seems like life throws us a curveball. And like we always strive to do, we try to hit a home run. We swing, and we miss miserably. We question, why is this even, is there even a cause anymore? We are gonna go through tough times in our life, where it seems like maybe we have nothing left to work for. That we're striving to get something accomplished in the church or do something for the Lord, and it just isn't working out. And we begin to maybe wring our hands and think, is this even worth it anymore? Within our families, maybe something happens amongst the family unit, and we begin to wonder, God, I thought I was trying to do everything I could to keep this together, and is there even a reason to continue on any longer? But we see here that that's the report that came from the servant to Jerius. He said, why troublest thou the master? Is there even any purpose anymore? If your daughter is dead, the purpose of you trying to get Jesus to come is no longer there. But we find some things in this story that I believe that can be an encouragement to us as well, that we find that Jerius did. And we know in the end of the story, of course, that his daughter ended up being just fine. But the first thing I notice in here, that even when this report came to Jerius, even when he was told, don't bother the master, don't trouble him any longer, he continued to stick along with him. And when those trials come, and when those things that happen in our life, and the devil tries to throw that thought into our mind and says, you know what, maybe it's not worth it any longer. Why are you even troubling yourself? Why troublest thou the master to try to see anything happen? The first thing I noticed that we ought to do is not to doubt. Don't doubt what the Lord has already revealed to you and what He has already given to you, that He can do for you in your life. Look at verse number 36, it says, "As soon as Jesus heard the words that was spoken, he saith unto the ruler of the synagogue, he says this, Be not afraid." What's it say, what's the next words? "Only believe." Jerius is sitting here thinking, no, I'm sure he's thinking in his mind, I thought that Jesus was the answer. I thought this was the thing to end this disease in my daughter's life. I thought this was the only hope we had. And now I'm getting this report that my daughter is dead, and I'm being told not to trouble her any longer. But Jesus is worse to him, is, hey, don't worry about that. Be not afraid, just believe. Cast that doubt out of your mind. Cast that doubt out of your heart and just believe that, hey, if I brought you here, I'm gonna get you through it. And the man, see, if this man had gotten to Jesus, he'd waited patiently for the person that he thought he could help. And this seemingly insignificant woman here, just verses prior, takes up the most valuable time that he could've found. Yep, just as they're about to go on their way to the house, where it seems like everything's gonna work out fine, that's when the report comes, that the daughter is dead. And he's told, don't worry about it any longer. The cause that you're trying to accomplish is no more. Just don't trouble the master any further. But Jesus' words were, don't doubt. See, we might find ourselves in the same situations. We are beginning to wonder, ask ourselves some questions, maybe if, did I make the right choice? Within our families, maybe, am I making the right choice? I thought if I would just get plugged in the church and do what is right, try to do what is right, everything would be smooth sailing. It's not, it was not working out like I thought. I really felt the Lord was deleting me in this way in the ministry. And instead of getting high fives and, yeah, let's go, let's charge up with a square gun, I'm getting opposition. I don't know if this is gonna work out like I thought it was. And we begin to maybe allow those doubts to come in. And you be saying, I believed that God would've had me to make these decisions, to make these choices. But right now, I'm not so sure. Can I say to you today, as Jesus said to Jerius, be not afraid? Only believe? See, you've probably heard it said many a times in this way, but not to undo and doubt a decision that has been made in faith, right? I can remember the time when I was called to preach and made the decision to go off to Bible college. And it didn't take long before I was, that decision was attacked. For on the second day that I was at Bible college, they had this financial meeting about how you're going to pay for your bill, whether, how many credits and classes you can take and everything. And so, we went, I went to that meeting, they sat down, and they said, what's your plans? And I said, well, I don't have a job lined up yet and all this type of thing. I'm trying to get in here and do this here and all this. And they said, okay, well, based on what you have right now, it looks like you would be able to maybe sign up for six to eight credits. Well, at that rate, it'd take forever to finish Bible college, right? And I'm thinking, that ain't right. I mean, I was devastated. I was hurt. I remember going back to my dorm room, closing the door, nobody else was in there. I just began to cry. And I'm like, God, I thought you wanted me to get into the ministry. At this rate, I'm gonna be here for 15 years. I mean, I know this isn't your plan. And I'm just beginning to pray about it. And I saw some counseling, I called my father as well. And he helped me through that situation to help me understand, guess what? Look, they're basing it off of what you know right now. You don't know how God's gonna provide. You don't know the job that He's gonna provide for you and how you're gonna be able to accomplish these things. Just continue to believe. Did God call you to go there? And of course, the answer was yes. So if that's the case, then don't doubt now when things kinda start to get a little rough. Don't doubt now when it seems like that your plan isn't gonna work out. So when we find these situations where it seems like all is failing and things are not working out the way we would plan, it is not time to doubt. We just need to keep on believing. Secondly, I noticed that Jerius dwelled with the master as well. Look at verse number 37, he says, "And he suffered no man to follow him, save Peter, James, and John, the brother of James." So here's how it's broken down already. Jerius has come to Jesus. He has gotten Jesus to follow him a little while. The woman with the issue of blood stops Jesus, it takes a precious time. And just after all of that is resolved, and it seems like everything's gonna work out, and they're headed to Jerius' house. Next thing you know, a servant comes and says, Jerius, don't worry about it. Don't trouble the master any longer, your daughter is dead. Jesus looks at Jerius and says, don't listen to all that. Be not afraid, only believe. But then he looks at everyone else and says, all right, fellas, everybody stick around here. Peter, James, John, you come with me, we're gonna take care of this situation. And the Bible tells us there in verse number 37, it says, "And he suffered no man to follow him, save Peter, James, and John, the brother of James." So he says, we're gonna take care of this, everyone else stay here. Would that have included Jerius' as well? Well, probably. I would have to assume so, because the Bible says, save no man except for those three. But we know that as we read on later on, Jerius was there when his daughter was healed. I don't know what might've exactly been going through Jerius' mind at this time, but I do know one thing, that Jerius probably had to have this thought. I thought Jesus was my only, was my only hope. Now I'm getting the word that my daughter is dead, the cause is gone. I'm sticking with this man until I can find out what exactly is gonna end up being, having been accomplished. And he said, I'm gonna stick with Jesus. He dwelt with the master. Even in the midst of trying times, even in the midst of the fact that there was, it didn't seem like there was any hope at all. He said, if there is gonna be, it's gonna be with Jesus, and I'm sticking with Him. Too often do we see people, when times get tough and times get rough, they begin to withdraw themselves from God. And that's the time that we need to stick closest to Him. Preacher, let me just encourage you this morning, or this afternoon. It might seem like there are times that it's just not working out the way that we had planned and hoped that it would. Now's not the time to break away and reevaluate and see if maybe I could go back and do some other type of job. Stick with Jesus. Dwell with the master. As the saying goes, when you're down to nothing, guess what? God is up to something. We just need to stick with Jesus. We will never know what God has in store unless we stick with the master. I also noticed that during this time, Jerius did not act off of his emotions either. Look at verses 38 and 39. It says, "And he cometh to the house of the ruler of the synagogue, and seeing the tumultum within him, that wept and wailed greatly. And when he was come in, he saith unto them, Why make ye this ado? And we, the damsel, is not wedged, thus sleepeth." So we find here that after Jesus tells everyone to stick around here, Jerius is, I'm sticking with Jesus no matter what. And he follows Peter, James, and John, and Peter, and Jesus. And they get to the house, and when they arrive, there's definitely not a celebration going on. There's a bunch of weeping and wailing going on. People were emotional at this time. And don't get me wrong, I understand the fact that this was an emotional time for these people. This daughter has passed away. This would have to have been an emotional time for Jerius, this wept. But even in the midst of these people crying and weeping, the Bible tells us that they wept and wailed greatly. We find that it was not those emotions that Jerius made his decisions off of. He decided to stick with Jesus and not make any major decision based off of his emotions. Isn't it true that many of our worst decisions were made in a very emotional state in our life? life?
True.
Maybe it's during that time when somebody is watching the TV, and that well-produced commercial comes on and says, "You have to have this. Oh, it starts your emotion. Oh yeah, I gotta do that." And they pick up the phone and order that, "For nine, for four payments of nineteen ninety-five, this can be yours." And guess what? We even add a second one in there. All you got to do is pay the shipping and handling of nineteen ninety-five. But you say, "Amen! That's what I need! I can't live life without it!" And they pulls at your heartstrings and that emotional, that, that your emotions causing you to make that decision. Isn't it true that road rage happens out of emotions?
I've heard.
Driving down, driving through the, through the, down the highway, and somebody cuts you off, and it's not the fact that you were happy that made you honk your horn and scream at them, it was that emotion of anger, right? And that too often have we seen people make very unfortunate decisions because of their emotions. See, there's some people all around the world today that are paying a very high price for making this decision based off of their emotional state. It's that husband or wife who, in that rage of emotions that's going on in there, says, "I want a divorce." It's during that high emotional state where that child looks at their parent and says, "I hate you!" And too often, it's during that high emotional state that the person in the ministry says, "I don't think this is for me anymore either." While everyone else, the Bible tells us, was crying and weeping, Jarius just decided, "I'm going to stick with Jesus. And it's not time for me to make the decision to, to bail or to do anything else. I'm just going to see it out till the end." Fourth thing I noticed here this afternoon, that Jarius was able to do, was he dismissed the scorers in this time. Verse number forty, it says, "And they laughed into the scorn. But when he had put them all out, he taken the father and the mother of the damsel, and then that were with him, and entereth in where the damsel was lying." So Jesus shows up. Jarius has already received the word that his daughter is dead, and he said, "Don't even worry about it. It's not, it's not worth it. She's dead. Don't trouble the master any longer." But he said, "I'm going to stick with Jesus." He continues on with it, and even in the midst of the emotional time, he says, "I'm not going to let that sway my opinion or decision. I'm going to stick with Jesus." And as they get there, all these people that were weeping and wailing when they see Jesus, and they say, "What in the world's going on here?" And the audacity of these people even, they, this tells us that they laughed into scorn, that Jarius would even have the faith that Jesus could do anything at this point in time, because they believed the daughter to be dead. But Jarius did not let these scorers, even some of them that might have been in his own family, keep him from believing that God was going to do something great. I'm sure you've been there, the family member who doesn't understand why you would devote your life to God. I'm sure you've been there, the family member that doesn't understand why that, why do you have to spend Sunday morning, Sunday night, Wednesday night, whenever the church visitation time is, Saturday for bus visitation, all, why, why is your life revolving around the church? I mean, I understand it's probably good for having kids in there for social reasons and things like that, so they can be around other kids, and, I mean, they teach good principles and all that, but why don't you take a little bit of time for yourself? I know there's missionaries and church planners in here today. Maybe the thought has come by from some of your friends or family, "Why would you give up everything you have right now? Everything you've known to be able to do that and go, and, and, and serve the Lord, as you call Him." And they scorn, they question, they try to cast doubt. Well, Jarius dismissed all those folks and said, "I don't want to hear anything about it." And Jesus actually dismissed them all and cast them out of the place. And we see that the next thing we find here is the fifth, the number five last thing, that Jarius just was, he just decided, "I'm going to depend on God for a miracle. I'm going to depend on God for a miracle." Look at verses forty-one and forty-two, it says, "And he took the damsel by the hand and said unto her mother, Talatukmai," I'm sorry, say it under her, "Talatukmai," which is being interpreted, "Damsel, I say, unto thee arise. And straightway the damsel arose and walked, for she was the age of twelve years. And they were astonished with a great astonishment." Jarius, his, his servant, his family scorned him, his servant said, "Don't trouble the master any longer. It's not even worth it." Jarius said, "I, I, I really don't know what's going on right now, but I believe Jesus was my only hope, and I'm going to continue to believe Jesus is my only hope. I'm going to listen to Jesus and not fear. Only believe. Get rid of the doubt. I'm not going to doubt it this time. I'm going to stick with Him. I'm going to stay with the master. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm just going to be with Him. I'm going to, I'm going to, wherever He goes, I'm just going to believe that He's going to take care of these things. I'm going to dismiss the scorer. I'm going to depend that Jesus is going to see it, see it, see it through in the end." See, we might be in a situation right now where things aren't going the way we had planned them to go. We might be in a situation right now where these are definitely not things we would have chosen for our own life, but we believe God calls us to this point, right? We believe God has put His stamp of approval, that He has designed for us to serve Him in this capacity. There might be someone here this afternoon, I don't know everybody's, the cases and stories here, there might be someone here that you're plugged into a local, at this church and trying to serve the Lord, but you just got word that you got laid off. "What in the world is going on here, God? I'm trying to take care of my family. I'm trying to serve you. What is going on? What's the purpose any longer?" Well, don't worry, don't doubt. Dismiss those scorers that say, "Well, why don't you just find a job that might be able to let you work as many hours as possible to get, to kind of catch up and everything, even if it means missing church and things like that? Forget all of those things and just depend on God to provide them here." It's sad, I think, that many a times, we don't see the miracles that God is doing today. We think of the miracles in the Bible, where the, the, the lame man is raised to walk, or the dead is raised to life, or the blind is made to see. But you know something? Miracles take place every Sunday. Every Sunday around this world, and every Wednesday, maybe when two of the services are, or whenever that midweek service takes place. Every time a church meets for visitation and soul meeting and things like that, miracles are taking place all the time around the world, whenever somebody calls upon the name of the Lord for salvation. Their life has been changed from one that is wrecked and, and, and destined for hell, and they have been given new life in Christ. And we, I think too often, we overlook that miracle. We want that miracle to be something that is extravagant. We want that miracle to be, you know, those stories where the person that says, "You know, I was down to my last ten cents in the bank account, didn't know how I was going to buy the groceries, went to the, they went to the mailbox, and there was a check." We want those type of miracles to take place, and that's wonderful when they do, amen. Do you understand that the Lord is working miracles in our lives every single day, or we ought to be looking for them? And when it comes to, if we would, if we would take the time and be able to see how God is working in those small things, when it comes to those times where it seems like we've lost everything, when it seems like those, the purpose and, and the cause of why we were trying to serve the Lord, what He's been trying to accomplish in our lives is no longer there, if we would have looked for the miracles in the smaller things, we'd be a whole lot quicker to rest in Him and believe He's going to provide a miracle in those big things. It hurts, it hurts to see, even in the short time that I've been in the ministry, the men that have fallen out of the ministry, whether it be because of sin, or they just couldn't see how God would allow those things to happen in our life, the struggles of the ministry. And I hope that that never happens in my life either. I pray that the grace of God allows me to continue on strong. But when those trials come, I hope that I can go to this portion of Scripture and remember, that it's not time to doubt. Don't doubt the calling to just dwell with the master. Don't act off my emotional state at that time. Act off of what I know to be true, that God is always there. He's always going to take care. To dismiss those scorers that try to, 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 to try to derail us. You know, the sad thing is, is I've even had it in the few short months that I've been at Mount Vista, where things are going, I'm, I'm so, I can't even, I can't even express how good God has been in the few short months I've been there. We've seen, we're seeing people sing, we're seeing people join the church, the church is growing, and things like that, but I've had people even say to me in the few short months, "I know that you want to see God do these great things, but we need to have, I just hope that you have a, 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 just have your focus in reality, right? I mean, just understand that, I mean, that's great things to have dreams, but make sure you have real expectations as well." And I shook my head and said, "Yes, I understand. We might not ever have three hundred, five hundred thousand people in the congregation. I'm just going to do whatever the Lord gives me, and, and to serve that, and to help those people." But on the inside, I'm just thinking, "I'm going to put it on God for a miracle. I'm going to put it on God to do something great." And when we find ourselves in those trying times, we need to do the same. Our Father, we thank you again for this afternoon. We thank you for all that you do. Thank you for the messages we've heard so far. Our God just asked that she would continue to bless this afternoon, and that she would just get honored to work out of everything that is said and done the rest of this day. We ask these things in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Everybody awake? Hello? Are you waking up there? Hello?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, look, well, looks like I overheard an apology. I got him out of order. I've been on the Cisco's party, apology, I got them out of order. So here's what we're going to do. Have you ever heard the word "expunge"? How many know what the word "expunge" means? Okay? Does anybody know what the word, everybody know what the word "expunge" means? It means to take it out of your life as if it never existed. Now, I heard that about a law one time, they were going to expunge the law, and I'm thinking to myself, "How can you expunge something that's been in existence?" And so, you're going to expunge his sermon, okay, for right now, okay? And then we're going to put them in, and we're going to go ahead and do that, then he's going to come and preach. And then after you get through, then you're going to take the sermon that was expunged and put it back in place after Brother Cisco preaches, okay? So how many think you could do that? I had one hand raised, and Brother Asia, he's, you know, I told you to do work with intelligent people, and I know people do well with people that are mentally ill. Okay? So that's what we're going to do. We've got that figured out, okay? And so, what are you going to do? Well, since I messed up, I might as well just go ahead and do whatever I want to do, okay? Well, amen? So I'll just have the Ciscos come and sing, okay? He, he got here today, he plays the guitar, is that right? Okay? And, oh, you're going to play the banjo? Is that right? Wow! I'm excited. When did you learn to do that?
Come on. We'll see. We'll see how it goes.
What'd you say?
He said, "We'll see how it goes."
We'll see how it goes. Did you see me working on it?
No, I didn't see you working on it. Okay. I like the Ciscos. They're good people, okay? Well, the three boys are, okay?
(Singing) I am glory, grace, and yes, in Jesus. That's where we go, I live in my day. I am glory, grace, and I became a Christian. That's where I stand, to walk the narrow way. No regrets, no regrets. For that love I have, it's pure and true, oh, dear. See, this is where I stand, to worship, to worship. I am glory, grace, and I worship all of you. I am glory, grace, and I worship all of you. I was born in a world, and then what is a world? I am glory, grace, and I worship Jesus. To be His friend, to be His greater. I am glory, grace, and I worship Jesus. I am glory, grace, and I worship Jesus. To the trust is worthy, my love and peace. No regrets, no regrets. It's been hard, just to walk with me, oh, dear. That's why I'm here, to be with me, I'm here. Oh, trust, I'm blessed, and I worship, oh, dear.
Do you read music, Brother Cisco?
No.
No, no, really, you do, or don't? Do you just play, play by ear?
Yes.
Wow. Get your mic. Right there. My cousin played the guitar, learned to play, picked it up and started playing the banjo. And I always wanted to be like that, and I picked it up, and I have never been able to figure out anything. Anyway, Brother Cisco, doing a good job. They're ready?
Amen.
Yeah? Okay. Well, let's listen to it for you, amen.
Amen, thank you. I was about to call you Brother Big again. Brother Cruz was in our church a few weeks ago, and I called him Pastor Big, and it's supposed to be.
Check, check this over.
We're on, I think. We're on, and so, good, good afternoon. And he said, "It's time for preaching." And nobody said, "Amen." I'm going to need your help. I know you're worn out, and, and it's a long day, but we get to be in church all day.
Amen.
Praise the Lord. Genesis, chapter number eighteen, if you would, Genesis, chapter number eighteen. I've enjoyed the preaching, and I've enjoyed the singing, the fellowship. I enjoy coming every year and getting to see some people that we don't get to see all the time, and it's a privilege to be around other preachers, and especially as a preacher, we get to hear other preaching, and that's always a blessing, and, and I've enjoyed the messages, get to know Brother Perry. I like him because his name is Robert, and, and that's the first reason I like him. The other reason is he has beard, and so, that's, that's worth liking him, amen. Genesis, chapter number eighteen, enjoyed, have enjoyed all the messages. I was thinking of, as I, as the Lord, again, to work on my heart about what to preach, and you know, you know, I guess we always try to be careful, right, preachers? We don't want to just pull something, you know, that's a gem out of the treasure box, and I don't keep good notes, so I never have anything worth pulling out, so I never can find my own notes, but, but you know, I think about that, and I, I just think, you know, usually when you're preaching, when you're asked to preach somewhere, you want to be a blessing to other preachers. You don't want to preach something that would typically be just maybe for your church, you want to be thoughtful of the audience and be a blessing to preach. It's natural sometimes to look for something in particular, and I say all that to say, I had a message in mind originally, when Pastor Cruz called me, and I was thinking about it, and just kind of get, you know, it was one of those ones, I thought, why would it be a blessing for preachers to be a blessing? And I haven't preached it in a couple of years, and, and so I thought, I'm going to try to preach that. And just felt like as I was trying to get into it, trying to, trying to get some notes again, because again, I just don't- And just felt like as I was trying to get into it, trying to, trying to get some notes again, because, uh, again, I, I just don't have notes usually. Uh, just scribbles on the napkin or something, but, but as I was trying to think about that, I just couldn't get back into the text, and I knew the thought, the premise, and all that. I just wasn't really filling it, and just wasn't sure, and then, uh, I came last night with the intent of, I'm not really sure what I'm gonna preach on, and had some other thoughts bouncing around, and, and, um, and then last night, uh, after, about halfway through Pastor Fisher's mess, message, the Lord just confirmed to me that I was not supposed to preach. The first message I had in mind wasn't the same text or anything like that. I wouldn't even share it with you why, uh, but, uh, other than to say that he did a much better job than I would have done. And, uh, and so, confirmed, okay, and then I realized, uh, you know, maybe this other direction, and, and so, I started looking at this direction where to go this morning. And then through the messages today, I said all that to say this, through the messages today, just felt like the Lord has confirmed that this message would be, uh, what God would have us, have for us right now, amen? And, um, so I want us to look here, Genesis, chapter number twenty, I'm sorry, Genesis, chapter number eighteen. Again, it's not very polished. I do something, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do something this afternoon I rarely do. I have a three-point outline. And what a foolish thing for me to tell you that after you've been sitting all day, but I do have a three-point outline. I don't usually do that. I didn't go to Bible college, so wasn't taught how to properly preach, and just jump right in, and, uh, just usually get a thought, and God gives me a thought about something. I want to give it to you, but I want us to look here. We'll look at some familiar passages of Scripture. But don't let me lose you, because if you, if you follow along, I want to give you kind of a different direction as we go along. So notice here in, in chapter number eighteen, Genesis, chapter number eighteen, the Lord appeared unto him, that's talking about Abraham in the plains of Mamre, and he's, as he sat in the tent, uh, in the door, in the heat of the day, and of course, he sees these two angels, one of them being the Lord Himself coming, and as they come by, he offers water, and offers to wash their feet, verse number four, and then to, as would be custom, to fetch bread for them, and to prepare a meal, and we'll pick up there in verse number six. I know we're well acquainted with the passage here. He says, "Abraham hasten into the tent, and Sarah said, make ready quickly three measures of fine meal, knead it, make cakes upon the earth, and Abraham ran unto the herd, fetched a calf tender and good, and gave it unto a young man, and hastened to dress it, and then the, the young man began to prepare it. It was made for a meal." And I want us to pick up again in verse number nine. At the bottom, it says, "And they said unto him, 'Where is Sarah, thy wife?' And he said, 'Behold, in the tent.' And he said, 'I will shortly return unto thee according to the time of life, and lo, Sarah, thy wife, shall have a son.'" And I would assume, uh, the crowd this afternoon, we all are well acquainted with what's taken place here. God has already, some four or five times in the Scriptures, as a matter of fact, I have a part to my Bible, five times prior to this, uh, that it's recorded for us that God has promised to Abraham, and promised to, uh, Sarah, that they would bear children, that, um, all the way, all the way back to Genesis, well, really, chapter number eleven, but there in chapter number twelve, uh, God promises indirectly, and we'll just kind of scan through there. If you would, look in chapter number twelve, he says, "I will make of thee," verse number two, "I will make of thee a great nation." And so, kind of the first time we see the promised seed being made to Abraham and Sarah, and, and maybe I should know this. I know there's probably some scholar out there that doesn't believe the Bible, but knows exactly how old Abraham was at this time. I don't know. But we can assume that they're of young enough age to where Abraham could, uh, uh, travel, and, and begin to start the kind of beginning of life here. We okay, we're following this? All right, and so, I want to make sure you're with me, and, and so, we see the first promise there in verse number seven, the Lord appears unto Abraham again, and said unto him, "Unto thy seed." And so, we find a second time now, God has told Abraham. And we could say by, by, um, by understanding that when Ab, when Abraham's being told this of God, he's also communicating this, we could assume, uh, to Sarah as well. Maybe, maybe, uh, you know, just letting her know as well, you know, but God has promised to me as a seed, and, and you, me, and my wife, we're gonna have a child. And so, now we see a second promise, and in chapter number thirteen, in verse number fifteen, the Lord comes again, and he says, "For all the language thou seest, to thee will I give it, and to thy seed forever." And so, some three times now, a process of time has taken place, but God has met with Abraham and reminded Abraham, "Abraham, you and Sarah will have children, and it will be, uh, he will be blessed, and he will be the father of many nations, uh, the father of nations. And, uh, I'm gonna bless them that bless thee, and curse him that curse at thee." And, and, and so, we see this, go into the Scriptures as well. As time progresses on, you know, Sarah and Abraham, uh, they start to realize, well, we're getting older, and, and, and the natural part of bearing children is, is, um, is looking dimmer, and, and more far off, and, and harder to reach, and, and, uh, and they begin to doubt what God can do in and through them, and, and almost, almost, uh, following up on what Brother Perry was just talking about, is sometimes as we get old in what we believe God wants us to do, there's often times at that timeframe where it just seems like, uh, like silence is happening, and it just seems like, like, well, this isn't gonna work out after all. I thought God had us going this direction, and Pastor Fisher preached on it last night as well. There are those times when, when just the work seems to stop. And, 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 and that happened for Abraham and for Sarah. As they got older, and, and they started to realize, like, we're not gonna have children, and so, when you get to chapter number fifteen, are you okay this, this afternoon? You, you understand the Scriptures? And so, chapter number fifteen, and when you look, we pick up here in verse number one, the bottom says, "After these things, the word of the Lord came unto Abraham in a vision, saying, 'Fear not, Abram; I am thy shield and thy exceeding great reward.'" And Abram said, "Lord God, what wilt thou give me, seeing I go childless?" So God has already told, we've just read the three times that it's actually recorded, and you'll kind of wonder even, maybe God had even told Abram a few more times than that. But now Abraham's having, Abraham's having a conversation with God, and he, and he, and he looks at God, and speaking to God, he says, "So what are you gonna do about this, this no children thing that's going on?" And think about that, and, and I'm not criticizing Abraham, but, but, but he's turning to God, who has already promised three times at least, "You're gonna have children," and he says, "Now, now, I know that we're supposed to have children, but what are we gonna do about this no child thing? How's this gonna work out? We're gonna bless our seed." Now, you, you understand what I'm saying?
Right.
And, and so, he says, "Well, what are you gonna give me, seeing, seeing I go childless?" Well, well, what God's gonna give him is a child. But, but you can see where Abraham is getting to the place in his life, and no doubt Sarah, and I really want to focus on Sarah here in just a minute, but as we, as we liken Abraham, so would Sarah, and so, no doubt, as they age in their life, they're getting to the place where they start to think, well, we know what God has promised, but, and, uh, we, we want God's blessings, and, and they're being faithful to the things that God has not liked. Uh, I mean, there's, there's been some little hiccups there. There's that situation, circumstance, where Abraham had lied about, um, said, well, not really lied, just told kind of a half-truth about Sarah being his sister and so forth, kind of misleading truth, but, but we see those things, but, but for the most part, Abraham is, is serving God, and God is blessing Abraham, greatly blessing him. Uh, but Abraham comes to God and says, "Look, what are you, what are we gonna do about this no child thing?" And so, he, he, he asked the question, notice there in verse number four, God's response, and, "Behold, the word of the Lord came unto him, saying, 'This shall not be thine heir.'" Why is he telling him that? Well, because back in verse number three, Abraham says, "Now, God, I know that you've promised a seed to me and Sarah. I know that you've promised to bless our seed, but, but since we don't have a child," as if God didn't, that God wasn't aware of the circumstance of Abraham and Sarah. And, but since we don't have a child, guess what, God, me and Sarah, and I know it doesn't say all that, but, and if you think differently, go ahead. It's my message. So I, I think that Abraham and Sarah sit there talking one night, and they discussed this many times, and, and maybe they said, you know, "God keeps promising, uh, Abram, I know God keeps promising, but, but maybe there's, maybe there's some other way to do this," and so, they devised this plan, why, well, you know, we got, we got this other child born in our house. Look there in verse number, verse number, at the end, verse number two, he says, "And the steward of my house is the lecher of the Vascas." And Abram said, "Behold to me that has given no seed, and lo, one is born in my, in my house is mine heir." And so, Abraham thinks, "Well, seeing I don't have a child, and me and Sarah didn't have the child that you promised, God, uh, maybe, maybe we misunderstood what the will of God is for our lives. Maybe we misunderstood what your calling was, and what your desire for, and plan for our life was." And, and so, they start to develop, as I have a part to my Bible, plan number one, and plan number one was trying to fulfill God's will their way. Do you see that in your mind? They, they designed, designed and desired a plan that was not God's plan for their life. Are we okay? And that's exactly what happens, as Brother Perry was talking a little while ago about, about there's those times in our life when, when, when the work just seems to stop, and it just feels like, well, did I do the right thing? And sometimes, we press on, we press on, Brother Leisure, but we press on with the idea of, "Well, maybe I need to, I need to strategize differently. I know God promises, but, but, but maybe I need to lower, lower my expectations of what God has." Whatever it is, we, we, we start to devise a different plan. And God says, "No, it's not gonna be that way." God says, "No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bless your seed, Abraham, and, and I'm gonna bless, that you're gonna have a child." And he says there in verse number four, he says, "This shall not be thine heir, but he that shall come forth out of thy own bow shall be thine heir." And so, you would think the problem's solved here, would you not? Say amen? Yeah, absolutely. You would think, all right, Abraham tried to develop his own plan, it didn't work out. And so, now some more time goes by, and we get to chapter number sixteen. Sarah is now seventy-six years old, Abraham is eighty-six years old. You say, "How do you know that?" Well, down at the, uh, in the middle of chapter number sixteen, the Bible says that when, when, um, Ishmael is born in the house, then Abraham, Abraham, there in verse number sixteen, uh, chapter sixteen, was four score and six years old, so he's eighty-six years old. And, uh, Sarah is seventy-six, she's ten years younger. And so, now some more time goes by, and they're, they're way up in their age, and, and, um, and so, I'm sorry, not way up, but they're up there. Amen? They're, they're, they're worse senior than they were before, and notice, they develop plan number two, if you would, and verse number one, the Bible says, "Now Sarah, Abram's wife, bare no chi, bearing no children, and she had an handmaid in the Egyptian, whose name was Hagar. And Sarah said unto Abram, 'Behold, now the Lord hath restrained me from bearing.'" Wait a minute. God has promised at least four times, recorded in my Bible, God has promised that, that it would be through Abraham, and it would be his seed, and his wife is Sarah, so her, her child as well. And, and now, at this later stage in life, Sarah starts looking at her life, and she's starting, and I want us to focus in just for a moment here on Sarah, uh, although Abraham's just as much part of this, but Sarah starts thinking, well, she starts thinking in her mind, well, this is, this is not what, what the expectations were. This is, I don't have a child, and I'm now, I'm now seventy-six years old, and ladies, now those of you that are sixty-plus, imagine Sarah's heart. And I know we've talked about it, you've read it, you've read it in your Bibles, but just imagine, even sixty-plus having a child. Some of you are like, "I'm thirty-plus, and I couldn't imagine having a child." But, but she starts thinking, there's no way, there's no, no chance of having a child, and so, she develops plan number two. And so, plan number two, here in chapter number sixteen, Sarah says, she says, "Well, here's what I want you to do, Abraham, if you're willing to. Uh, why don't you go into my handmaid?" Notice there in chapter number sixteen, verse two, "And Sarah said unto Abram, 'Behold, now the Lord hath restrained me from bearing. I pray thee, go into my handmaid.'" It may be, well, that, uh, maybe that I may have ten children by her and Abraham. Abram, rather, hearkened to the voice of Sarah. You know, when we start messing with God's will and God's plan, well, oh, oh, the depths that we'll go to. You gotta be thinking, in Sarah's mind, as a matter of fact, I know this is a fact, that Sarah, uh, she did not want this for her family. She did not want this for her husband. You'd say, "Well, it was culture back then." Uh, you know, Sarah, we find out later, she resented the fact that she had done this. She, she realized that there was such great remorse upon her, so Sarah's heart was not, "I want to give my husband away." She, her desire was ultimately to fulfill the God, I'm sorry, fulfill God's plan for her life and for Abraham's life. And she was willing to go as far as to, uh, almost to the limit, if you, to pass the limit, if you ask, uh, go past the limit and give up her own husband, and, uh, to her handmaid, just to try to fulfill the will of God. You be careful about trying to fulfill the will of God. God does not need your help doing his plan. But, but, just news alert, before you were, God was already doing stuff. I'm forty years old, I'll be forty-one years old, uh, this year, and, and it's enjoyable to be around, uh, uh, preachers like Brother Horner. I think about Brother Horner, has been, he was, he was a seasoned veteran in the, in the ministry when I was born in nineteen seventy-seven. I think about Pastor Cruz, he was, he's a seasoned man, and, and I like being around him, because it, it reminds me that the world, there was things going on before I was here. And, and when I leave here, and when you leave here, should the Lord carry, things will still go on. God is good about being God. He does not need our help. And Sarah develops this plan, and she convinces Abraham to, to go into her handmaid and regret. And so, Abraham, they do this, and, and of course, we know, Hagar bears a child, and, and, uh, Abraham goes, well, now, he comes before God, and he says, "Here we go, God, now, now I have a child of my own seed." And we know God's response. We'll go over in chapter number seventeen. God said in verse number fifteen, we'll just jump ahead, I'm assuming you know most of this, "God said unto Abraham, 'As for Sarah, thy wife, thou shalt not call, or shalt not call her name Sarah. But shall call her name, uh, but Sarah shall her name be, and I will bless her." A little more specific than God was before with it. Before it was, "I'm gonna give you, I'm, I'm, you're gonna have a seed out of your own bow, you're gonna have a seed." Now God has to get real specific with Abraham. Abraham, you can almost picture this, I, I know it wasn't this way, but I almost picture God grabbing a hold of Abraham's shoulders and going, "Would you listen to me?" Abraham's now ninety-nine years old, and Abraham's trying, he's got his own plan, his own, and he said, "How do you know he's ninety-nine?" Beginning of the chapter there, in chapter seventeen, verse one, says that he's ninety-nine years old. Sarah's, uh, eighty-nine years old, and, and God has to grab Abraham by the shoulders and say, "Don't you understand? You're gonna have a child of your own seed, and it's going to be a child of Sarah." Stop trying to play, I know God doesn't say this, but it's almost as if God's saying, "Stop trying to do my will." But, what, maybe that came out wrong. Do my will, but stop trying to, trying to be God. Stop trying to do what only I can do. And he says, "I'm going to bless her and give thee a son also of her." Yeah, yeah, I will bless her, verse, verse sixteen. "She shall be a mother of nations; kings of, of people shall be to be of her." Said, you know, I'll say about, uh, Pastor Fisher preached a little while ago, and he was talking about, through ministry, there's change, through time, there's change. I'm sure glad that God's changed me. And the reality is, is he, he made the statement, uh, toward the end of his message, he said, uh, "Is your church on the right track?" He said, "I don't even know." And that's me all the time, and you know what? I'm pretty sure that my church is not going the exact direction we're supposed to. You say, "Why would you say that?" Because I've changed things already enough to know that whatever I'm doing right now, there's probably something God's still gotta grow me in. You guys, I can't see your faces. I don't have my glasses on, so. But there's, there's probably some things. I, I, I grew up, uh, my, my dad has been in prison my whole life. I grew up as a prisoner's kid. I was a PK, just like my wife, she's a pastor's kid. I was a prisoner kid. My dad was a member, is a member of the Aryan Brotherhood. I was raised with certain mentality. Certain, certain ideas, and, and twisting of Scriptures to even, to, to teach those type of principles. And, uh, and, and, uh, I, I now pastor a church that is, that is so diverse. A while back, my wife, uh, I say a while back, this was probably like four or five years ago, my wife said, uh, uh, she said, uh, "Would you, uh, what, what would you think if our boys married somebody that was not white?" I said, "What do you?" She said, "What if they marry a girl that's not white?" And I said, "I'll just be happy they married a girl." I've changed. Why? How did you change? Because I'd read my Bible, and God's changed my opinion about some things to the, to, to God be the glory. And, uh, we ought to be, we ought to be able to change, but, but here's, here's the point, is the Bible tells me, in Second Corinthians, chapter number ten, it, it tells me that, uh, that we, we, we don't war against flesh. We walk in the flesh. We don't war after the flesh. For the weapons of our warfare are not carnal, but mighty through God, to the pulling down the strongholds. Casting down, is anybody knowing? Imaginations. Every high thing that exalts itself against the knowledge of God. Casting down imagination. That word imaginations is the word reasonings or conclusions. You know, we have to, we have to be submissive to the Holy Spirit in our lives, so that when, when He speaks to us... so that when He speaks to us and gives us the weapons to fight, you know, the biggest problem, I don't know about you, the biggest problem I have takes place up here. It's the imaginations of my own mind, if you would. The reasonings or the conclusions of my own mind. You say, "Why are you saying all this?" I'm saying all this to get back to Sarah here. I think in Sarah's heart, when you get to chapter number 18, and let's get back there, if you would. When you get back to chapter number 18, and God tells Abram in there in verse number 10, "I'm gonna certainly return into the equivalent of a time of life, and lo, Sarah thy wife shall have a son." And notice there in verse number 11, "Now Abram and Sarah had, Sarah's, Sarah were old and well-stricken in age, and it ceased to be..." Is this all right if I take this off for you? All right, get to work now. And so he says, "It ceased to be with Sarah after the manner of women." And notice there in verse number 12, "And therefore Sarah left." She said within herself, read there in verse number 12, she said within herself, saying, "After I am waxed old, shall I have pleasure, my lord being old also?" She's, it's almost as if Sarah is mocking God. But you know what? I don't think Sarah's mocking God. Say, wait, I think in Sarah's mind, she thinks I have failed. She thinks I failed. I have failed in life. Their custom, I know it's not this way, although I think some, somewhat internally, but especially in their culture, a woman's duty was to marry and bear children. After all, that's the way God had planned there in chapter number one of Genesis. And they were to be fruitful and multiply, and it was in their hearts, especially in the Jewish culture. It was in the heart of Sarah and every woman after her and before her to bear her husband, children, that they could work the fields and do whatever needed to be done. And Sarah is now 89 years old. She's 89 years old, and don't you think, in spite of what God, the five times that God has come and told her, told Abraham, and Abraham told her, even besides those five times, don't you think that the thought has come through Sarah's mind over and over and over? "I've born no children. I've born no children. I have failed in life." You say, "Hold on, Brother Stacey, I don't think that Sarah's a failure. I don't either, actually." Here's what I'm saying, don't miss this. I'm not saying I think Sarah's a failure. I'm saying I think that Sarah thinks that Sarah's a failure. No, you say, "Well, God closed up a womb." I know, but in Sarah's mind, Sarah thinks Sarah is a failure in life. Her desire was to bear children, and it would be all the desire. We won't take the time to go there, I know we need to hasten. I don't know how much time I have, Preacher, but you just let me know. But you look in chapter number 30, and Sarah's granddaughter-in-law, or great-granddaughter-in-law, Rachel, when it was time, she looked at her husband Jacob after Leah was having all those children. She looked at Jacob, she said, "Give me children, or else like that." It was a woman's desire, that was her whole ambition in life, was bear children. And here Sarah is 89 years old. She overhears this conversation going on outside. Maybe she's helped prepare the meal inside. But she overhears the conversation, she's not, I don't think she's trying to butt in, but they're out there talking, and Abraham's saying something, and she hears the Lord tell Abraham, "And you're gonna have a child coming up real soon." And Sarah has heard this over and over, and Sarah just kinda chuckles, like, "Give me a break. I have finally accepted the fact that I'm a failure in life." You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I don't think Sarah's a failure, but I think that Sarah thinks that Sarah's a failure. And she mocks it. You know, I'll call this, this afternoon, we'll move real quick, I'll call this a natural failure. A natural failure is this, that which happens that you have no control over. Sarah didn't have any control over having children. She would've had them 50 years ago. She had no control over it. You say, "What do you mean, like a natural failure?" A natural failure is something that you have no control over. And some of you, some of us Christians go through life, and we think, "Boy, if I only looked better." You say, "People don't really think that way." Yes, they do, maybe it might be some of you. "If I only looked like them, I could be successful in life, but I was made different, and I don't have good looks." And God would say, "You're not a failure, but in your mind, you think you failed in life. You think you can't succeed because..." Like for me, if I wanna play basketball, basketball, I failed, I'm only 5'7". I failed, natural failure. You understand? Some of you boys wanna play basketball? You might not grow any taller. I skate well, I just watch baseball now. The natural failure. By the way, natural failures are when, listen to this, when our expectations are based upon the assumption of the expectations of those around us. Did you get that? Our, natural failure is when our expectations are based upon the assumptions of the expectations of those around us. Natural failure is when I start to think that you think something about me, and I think that you have certain expectations of me. Did you get that? And we can go through natural failure. You say, "What are the results?" Let me give you the results real quick. The results of this sarcasm. That's what she did, she laughed sarcastically. Sarcasm, doubt, fear. Can God? God has to remind her, "Look, God can do this. Is anything too hard from the Lord, verse 14? Doubt and fear." The other result, schemes, plans. "Well, I'll try to figure out some other way to do this," or to do mine. That's a natural failure. Would you go real quickly? How much time do I have, Preacher? Do I have any time left?
We've been over half minutes already.
I'm, give me, Luke chapter 22. How much time do I have, Preacher? Just a couple minutes, or are we done? Okay, Luke chapter number 22, just give me a few more minutes here. Luke chapter number 22. Luke chapter number 22. Natural failures. Luke chapter number 22, notice there in verse number 31, real quick. I know you're familiar with these, but thank you for turning there. Luke 22, verse 31. "And the Lord said to Simon, Simon, behold, Satan had desired to have you, that he may sip you his wheat; but I prayed for thee, that thy faith fail not." I would say the second failure that you and I sometimes face are spiritual failures. Spiritual failures. And spiritual failure is when we think that we can obtain victory without Him. And it's based in arrogance. Spiritual failure will always happen, just like it happens with Peter. We're not gonna spend that much time on this, because I know we're well acquainted with the story here, but it's just like with Peter, when God starts to warn us about stuff, and we go, "Wait, look, I'm not in trouble." God says, "Peter, Satan desired to sip you, but be careful." And Peter's response was, "No, no, I'm all the way." "I know they might fail you, but I'm not gonna fail you." It's kinda like what you do, Christian? When the Bible says, "Evil communications corrupt good manners." You go, "Well, I know that's the case for everybody else, but I can hang out with that crowd enough that happens to me." Spiritual failure. It's when we become arrogant in our own abilities to spiritually accomplish something, and the results are shame. That's what would happen to Peter. He would go out there in chapter number 22, and notice there real quickly in verse number 62, after he had sinned, he says, "And Peter went out and wept bitterly." Why? He was shameful and depression, uselessness. Peter would go on from here, he said, "I go fishing, I'm done. I'm leaving all this behind." Spiritual failure has the potential to lead us to uselessness or the feeling of uselessness. Are we okay? Let's look at one more, think about one more, if you would. Would you go to 1 Kings, chapter number 19? 1 Kings, chapter number 19. Try to move quickly. 1 Kings, chapter number 19. You know, in chapter number 18, Elijah stands on that mountain. He calls out those 850 false prophets. Fire comes down from heaven. He thinks revival has spread through Galen. But the next day, the Bible says, "Ahab," verse number one, "Ahab told Jezebel all that Elijah had done, and with all how he explained all the prophets with a sword. Jezebel sent a messenger unto Elijah, saying, So let the gods do to me, and more also, if I make not that life as the life of one of them by tomorrow about this time. And when he saw that, he arose and went for his life." You know, I'm always fascinated, all that Elijah had done up to this point in his ministry, all that he had done, this one woman scared him. I don't think the one woman scared him. I don't think he was afraid of Jezebel. You say, "What do you mean?" I think what happens to Elijah right here is not that he's afraid of Jezebel, but that he thinks he's failed. You say, "What do you mean, failed?" He's had a ministry failure. He's gotten to the place where he goes on to say, as he's confronted God, notice there in verse number 10, "Elijah says, But I've been very jealous for you; for the Lord of hosts, for the children of Israel, have forsaken thy covenant, thrown down thy altars, and slain thy prophets, and with a sword; and even I only am left, and they seek my life to take it away." Says, "I've done all this for you." It's a ministry failure. Elijah gets to the place where ministry failure is when, by the way, ministry failure is when our expectations are based on results instead of based on what God's expectations for our ministry are. What do you mean? Like, because we get called to ministry, like you were kinda talking about this, Brother Patrick, we get called to a ministry, men, and we have these high ambitions of results. We want results. "Well, I'll start a church if the people come." God, you called me to start a church, but people aren't coming. So obviously, you don't want me to know. God didn't call us to a church so people would come. He called you to a church, because that's what His plan is for your life. No, well, I don't know about you. I know we support a missionary, actually, out of Brother Fisher's church. We support a missionary in China. And when he was with us a couple of years ago, I said, "How many?" He'd been there for 10 years. Some of you may know. He had been there for 10 years. I said, "Brother, how many people have got to say that in 10 years?" He said, "About 25." And I said, "I'm supporting this man." 25 people in 10 years? I would've quit a long time ago. And the fact that he's going back, I'm supporting him. You know what I saw in him? Somebody that didn't go to China for results. He went to China because God called him to China. And God's given results. Not much has happened since that time, since he was with us. Much has happened, but we sometimes get focused on the results, and that's what Elijah had done. Elijah, God has to show Elijah, we don't have time, I know we don't have time to develop all this. God shows Elijah, he says, "You know, Elijah," he says, "there's the fire, there's the wind, but I'm not in those things. I'm in this little small voice." And then he tells Elijah, what does he tell him? "Get up." See, he's not that mean. It would've felt like that mean. Just tells him, "Get up, get back to work." You know, we get in, ministry failures are when our expectations are based on results instead of God's expectations for our ministry. Not about you, but I fail all the time and stuff. You know, I failed at basketball. I fail spiritually all the time. You say, "You did it." "Yeah, and so you knew." And I failed ministerially, or I feel like a failure. And you know what God says? "I'm there to pick you up, because a just man falls seven times and rises up again." Get back up and get back in the thing. And that's what he had to do with Elijah. That's what he had to do with Peter, when he was out there cooking. Amen? Guys, okay? Do you sometimes feel like you failed at something? God says, "I'll pick you up. Just keep going. Be steadfast, unmovable, always avowing in the work of the Lord, forasmuch as ye know that good labor is not in vain." Just keep going. Amen?
Well, everybody, stand up. Okay? And take your songbook. And look at your songbook. Close it. And you have five minutes. Go to the bathroom, get something to drink. Okay? All right, thank you. We'll be right back in five minutes.